Start reading. I always begin the meeting by stating many of the things that are required to be said. So I'm gonna start right now. This is the regular meeting, the zoning Board of Appeals. August twenty one, two thousand twenty five, beginning at seven P M. By Zoom virtual meeting. To allow the public access, anyone may access a meeting by telephone and or Zoom. Over recording in the city of Norwalk YouTube channel. Specific instructions and links can be found at norwalkct.gov forward slash meetings. Members of the public may call in to participate. Callers will not be able to see the meeting participants. All participants will be muted upon entering the meeting. To speak, dial nine on the phone and you will be called on by the host of the meeting during the public comments section. Each hearing has one. All speakers must state their name and address. Comments must be on a topic in the agenda. And are limited to three minutes. Anyone disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting. Including by using threatening hateful or sexually explicit language will be removed. Please find the information using the link above, the one I've stated about meetings. Members of the public who wish to provide live comments may also use Zoom meeting platform. All participants will be muted upon entering the meeting to speak, click raise your hand indicator and you using Zoom. Will be called by the host of the meeting during the public. All speakers must state their name and address. Comments must be on a topic of the agenda and are limited to three minutes. Anyone disrupting. Just as I said above about the phone calls, you'll be thrown off. Members of the public who wish to provide comment are encouraged to submit those via email. Which most do in advance of the meeting. For those comments to be included in the record, they must be submitted by twelve P M. The day of meeting or thereabouts. Please email Tammy Malinato at Malinato. At norwalkct.gov with the subject line, public comment. Provide written public comments prior to the meeting. Application materials can be found at a link that should be showing in the meetings. Uh, connection on the web. It's quite a long link, so I'm not gonna read it. So at this point, I want to call the meeting to order. Uh, make sure that I know who's with us. I work good. Good to go. Tonight we have, and I'm gonna identify each hearing who's sitting at that hearing. We have more than five. So there are only five per hearing. Lee Levy, Daniel Sancheck. Steve Ferguson, Ben Hamper, Peter, and Kathy Olson and myself, Andy Conroy. And with the first item, I think. We're ready to go, which is twenty five oh six, twenty six oh one, which was held over Daniel Alfredo. Continued from June twenty six, two thousand and five, Adam's secretary.
Sure. Uh, item twenty five dash zero six, twenty six dash zero one, Daniela Aferro. Variance to allow parking within the front setback thirty feet required, zero feet proposed. And tandem parking following the fact. Conversion of a one car garage to living space at the existing single family residence in C D dash one S zone. Properties located at thirty four Garner Street, District two, block twenty seven, lot forty one. Request, the applicant seeks relief of parking locate. Parking location requirements to allow two tandem parking spaces in the driveway. Both within the front setback in order to resolve a zoning violation and maintain the after the fact garage conversion. Background, the single family home was built in nineteen sixty. At that time zoning regulations required one parking space to be located behind the front setback. The single bay garage met that requirement but was converted without permits within the last two years. As such, the property is currently under violation for those renovations without permits. And for operating a rooming house which is not allowed in the zone. The converted garage along with the remaining lower level was utilized as a rooming house with separation locks. On the bedroom doors and a shared second kitchen that had been installed now without permits. Staff instructed the owner to cease parking vehicles in the grass adjacent to the driveway. More recently zoning staff received a complaint that an animal care business. Is operated from the home which was corroborated by an online business listing. The homeowner alleges that this is erroneous listing and has requested that it be removed. The complaint remains under investigation. Analysis and findings, there is no zoning hardship. This is a self created issue that stems from the illegal conversion of the garage. To support the illegal use of the home as a rooming house. Restoring the garage would obviate the need for a part variance for parking. And return the property to the existing nonconforming. With the number of parking spaces, the tandem spaces are sought due to current regulatory requirements of two parking spaces. And prohibition of tandem parking for a single family dwelling. However, whether one prior to nineteen seventy eight or two parking spaces are required, they must be located behind the front setback. This property has been advertised on Airbnb zoning regulations do not prohibit short term rentals of single family dwellings such as Airbnb. But the violation is for making separate kitchen and separate locks, which is rooming house. The property owner may let rooms. May let rooms provided there are no separation locks, separate units or cooking implements and no more than three unrelated persons occupy the home.
All set there?
Yep.
Uh, the five members that are gonna sit on this hearing are Lee Levy. Andy Conroy, Daniel Sancheck, Kathy Olson, and Ben Han Peter. Who's representing the client?
Um. Sorry. Hello, um, Jorge V Hernandez, A R Q. Uh, representing uh, the firm that created the the plans to try to. Uh, receive their variance and rectify the um, the issues in the house. Um, if may I share the drawings?
Uh, now you're representing the client tonight? Is that under, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. You can go ahead and um. Share screen and tell us about it.
Okay, so um. This is a one story dwelling and as. It was probably describe it in the introduction. Uh, there was a. Garage enclosed without the benefit of a permit which created two variances. Or were required to variances, one which is parking in the front yard and one is for tandem parking. As we have done in as built of the property and this was called, it was the former garage. And this is what is proposed as a legalization, but it was. You know, the caveat that's already been built and there's gonna be uh, some items that we will uh, if approved, we will. Have to do in order to comply with the uh, building code, current building code. So what they're proposing is to uh, have um, a foyer. Convert this into a system bedroom with an storage in a laundry area in the back. The use that our client has represented to us and I believe. They're online as well, so they can speak to that if needed. Is that this is their family of five? And this is uh, will be used for their mother in law. Um, this is the rest of the house. There is a kitchen area living and there are two bedrooms. Oh, I'm sorry. This is uh, an elevation of the house and what it will look like with the garage. And as well as you see pictures of the neighboring houses and a picture of their house. As a corollary stance. Uh, if we go back to um. The site plan uh, to put a turnaround and to add a parking space, which was still need a variance, but to eliminate the tandem parking. It will be very uh, expensive and difficult because it will have to create um, numerous retaining walls in this area. Issues. You know, all these items that you described before as a um, being advertised, uh, we weren't aware of that. And I'm not sure if uh, I don't think that's. Currently being done or advertised as that. I know the intention is uh, for Daniela to use it as for their family. As a family of five, like I said, they wanted to use it for um, their mother in law and. Again, uh, we understand that uh, right now we are in a difficult position because this is. Was done without the benefit of the permit, but we are trying to rectify that by being in front of the board. And uh, listen to the questions in comment and see if we need to come back or try to create an alternate solution.
Lee, you're in the lead.
I am?
Yeah, on this item, yeah.
Okay, um. You've talked very little about parking. Um, you said something about retaining walls. Uh, and being expensive to build. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, you realize that we cannot consider cost as a factor in your variance request. We don't care what things cost.
I, I do understand that, but I'm trying to create. You know, it will be in the environmental impact as well of uh, you know, putting all those retaining walls and the impact.
Have you done a site plan for us to look at with that parking?
Uh, no, we can definitely provide.
Then you've done no cost analysis of what that would cost.
Like I said, we can definitely provide you with that, yes.
I mean, if we made it a requirement to the approval that you provide the two parking spaces behind the front yard setback. Uh, what is your response to that?
Uh, to do be beyond the front yard? Well, you can, this is the two areas that will be beyond the front yard. And it's physically impossible and you have the um, the area where it used to be parked in front of the garage. Which now has become part of the house. So this is the only area left on the side to put a driveway. You can, you don't, I mean, you have, you have a, oh, I'm sorry.
What's the driveway, what's your driveway width? What width driveway are you? Eight, eight foot, eight and a half foot?
Yes, you have six feet here. Uh, and you will have, you will have to create a new curb cut and show a driver on this side.
Okay, the length of the driveway in the photos I've seen is not very long. And the house kind of set on, not the normal way you would see a house with. The front being the full width of the house, but it's set looking at the side of the house.
Yeah, it's kind of a sideways house.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the front yard. Um. Maybe Tammy could help is between the side of the house and the street. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, yes, it's the former garage is the facade. And yeah, the front setback goes almost to the edge. You can see they've got thirty three point eight. From the dimension from the corner of the property line to the corner of the home. So the required front setback is thirty. So that's why they're seeking the variance to allow both tandem and parking within the front setback.
Right. And we, we have a problem, Tammy, with tandem parking?
It's not allowed in this zone. It's allowed in um, for duplex use in C D two zone only and and. Another situation that doesn't apply, but yeah.
So you. Wish you would come to us with a plan.
Idea, uh, then Dan, where you would put the parking if it can't be in tandem at that location?
Was that a question to me? I'm sorry.
No, not Tammy, Dan, the presenter.
I think it's Javier.
Mister.
Yes, I'm here. Oh, Mister Pento. Uh. Now, this is Mister Hernandez, uh, represent him to be in the uh.
Sorry.
The only area will be then it will be. And what is now the side of the house or the front approach, but. This is the only area that will be available. There's a utility pole, so we will have to uh, show you. The alternate location for a driveway, but. Again, let me show you, I think the picture.
That doesn't quite do it.
Yeah, there you go. It doesn't quite show, but.
Is that in the middle, the middle picture?
Yes.
Yeah, don't move it around anymore because you got it in the middle now.
And the driveway in this case would have to be moved to the right, right?
Alright, so it looks like the driveway angles, maybe not, but it looks like it angles downhill. And it looks like this area to the right is relatively flat. If you came in off the street. Hmm, that's interesting.
Uh. We will have to um. Draw an alternate and explore that with Mister uh, with Daniela and her husband and um. Bring that to the board as a solution or the reason why we can't do it.
Well, why didn't you come prepared tonight to do that? I'm getting very upset over this. Project.
Wait one second, when were you hired, Mister Pinto?
Uh, we've been uh, working on this. I just came into this project, so I apologize if we didn't uh, have the information. Of for you tonight, but. We were under the impression that we were, you know.
He is in the lead on this and he's brought up parking. We brought up tandem parking and. I think just to make sure we don't miss it, um, there's a self created problem here. With the elimination of the garage as a garage. So these are big problems that need to be solved.
And we've been asking for solutions for months.
Okay, this is.
And I'm. Aside from the fact that you've just been retained, obviously your client is not communicating with you very well. And.
Well, I. So what I will request tonight is if we can uh, adjourn this, I will meet with the client, we will um. Present you with a full package and have a good understanding and also address some of the other comments that. They were mentioned at the beginning about advertisement or how the the use of the house, so we give you a coherent. Package and uh, be able to everybody be on the same page.
Coherence would be very nice.
So if we, if we can, if the board um, grants the continuation, the decision will have to be made at the next meeting. Otherwise, we're gonna run out of our allowed extensions.
Okay.
Then we'd have to make a decision, even if you're not prepared to have us make a decision.
Understood.
Okay. So if the board, if the board and Lee, this is the only time I'll interject because it's an admin issue. If the board is okay, we'll go ahead and postpone this to the next meeting. Those that are sitting, let me know. Raise your hand if it's a yes.
Well, I'm getting tired of hearing this, but I'd like to see it resolved.
Okay, that's enough. Yeses, we're gonna go ahead and put it, but you're down at time, so it has to be resolved by the next meeting.
So I just wanna go on the record to advise, I know we have multiple attendees who are interested, the neighbors um, for this property. Their hands are going up, but I'm sorry, this isn't an opportunity to talk because the the meeting has been continued. So it'll be, the next meeting will be. Will be September eighteenth and I'm uh, I can only apologize.
I have a question before we uh, move on uh, for the applicant and maybe for Tammy if you can help out here. If, if we put the, if the parking goes next to the house like we were just discussing. I don't think there's room for it to be side by side, but if you have like a turnaround space, does that like eliminate it? Uh, uh, like it's not considered tandem anymore?
Right, they could potentially provide a back out space, turnaround space. So, but that's what I think they, sorry, go ahead.
And does that turnaround space also need to be behind the front setback, behind the thirty feet?
It does not technically, so here's where it gets a little dicey. The regulations allow beyond the table standard, which is supposed to be two spaces for a single family home. It allows you to add a third back out slash parking space within the front yard, provided it's ten feet from all property lines. No greater than two hundred square feet and no more than. I believe in that zone, it is fifty percent of the front yard can be occupied with both driveway and parking surface. In addition, there's a screen, a vegetative screening requirement, so it is possible. The engineer will have to, you know, try to figure out if if that can happen. Um. They'd also need to get curb cut, so they have to close one curb cut, open another curb cut, they'd have to get DPW approval to do that, which then would then come, you know, after any potential. Z B A variance, so staff will reiterate the position. The simplest, cleanest solution for this problem is to re- to restore the the fifth bedroom. Or sixth bedroom back into garage space, then they become back to their legally nonconforming status.
Yeah, yeah, I'm inclined to agree, but it does seem like there is a path. For them here that that actually doesn't involve, that might not involve a variance at all. If both of us basically are behind the front setback and you've got the turnaround spot, you wouldn't even need to come back to us.
Possibly, if we, if we make the determination that, that they just need to in changing. What was the use of a garage slash parking space to now living space? Then are we going to grant the allowance of only maintaining one space, one compliant behind the front setback? And then, because again, the table says if you can provide your compliance spots, you can add a, a, another space in that front area, but yeah, I think that's.
Have you heard from Mister Pinto as he was being speaking with you?
Um, Daniela only emailed me, Miss, Mrs. Pinto emailed me last night to say she would attend. Um, and that's it.
Well, Mister Pinto, you really do want to talk to uh, Mrs. Baldonado. Uh, she is an expert in this. Uh, she is a zoning enforcement officer for the city of Norwalk. And can give you guidance if you have questions. Um, I think this is a bit of a toughie and uh, it does look to my, to me like there. Is a way to get past the problem, but deciding we don't want to get past the problem most likely would get you a denial.
Well. I definitely, uh, this is Mister Hernandez again. I definitely appreciate that and we will be reaching to Mrs. Baldonado. Um, I do think that um, I haven't heard the uh, sense of the board and haven't looked at the um, alternates. It's the best solution will be to create an alternate that does not require. It will eliminate totally that driveway. Um, so.
Parking, yeah, you want to eliminate that.
Yeah.
With that in mind, if anybody uh, has another question, please ask it.
Well, I'd like to make a recommendation that Mister Hernandez. Read all the public comments that have been submitted. Uh, regarding this project, uh, so he's not operating in a vacuum. And. Address those comments at the next meeting. Rather than. As I said, operating in a vacuum.
I certainly will.
Okay, very good. Ready to move on?
I am.
Okay, thanks, Lee.
Oh.
Uh, Danielle, next up.
All right. We're doing uh, Norwalk Ave, right?
Yes.
Okay. So item twenty five dash zero seven, one seven dash zero one, Norwalk Connecticut Ave LLC. Variances of table four point three point one dash G for a front setback. Six foot minimum, twelve foot maximum required, eighty four feet proposed. Building height, two stories minimum required, one story at rear, two story. At front proposed and frontage buildout sixty percent required, zero proposed. To construct a new additional principal building. Proposed as a freestanding drive through coffee shop in C D dash three C zone. Property located at six forty one Connecticut Avenue, District five, block seventy two, lot twenty eight A. Request applicant seeks relief of location and number of story requirements to construct a small drive through coffee shop. At the northwest corner of the parcel background, the site consists of an existing commercial building, Raymore and Flanagan Furniture Store. And a large parking lot located in the front. Analysis and findings, the intent of the new zoning regulations is to over time bring buildings along main corridors closer to the street for pedestrian engagement. However, this proposed drive through building would not fit that paradigm. Although it is possible to walk up to order a beverage, the primary function is as a drive through. The common council setbacks established in nineteen forty one, which include a seventy foot. From the street center line, front setback from Connecticut Ave are not incorporated into the new zoning regulations. Those common council setbacks did appear in the old zoning regulations. Zoning staff is unable to apply or enforce any stipulation that is not in the zoning regulations. While a two story building requirement is carried over from the old zoning regulations, it does appear to be a practical difficulty to apply the newer form based code requirements to this type of small business model situated on this large lot. Revised. New plans submitted relocate and reconfigure the proposed buildings. The two buildings, coffee house and refrigerated storage are rotated. Aligned and connected with a screen wall so that the length will run parallel with Connecticut Avenue. The proposal brings the buildings closer to the front property line at twenty nine feet proposed versus the previous eighty four feet. The plan also provides a picnic table and a connecting sidewalk. The vehicle drive through lanes and parking have also been reconfigured.
Okay, um. The five sitting for this hearing is Andy Conroy, Danielle Sancheck, Lee Levy. Uh, Steve Ferguson and Ben Han Peter. And I'll be the lead on this one. Uh, who's representing the client tonight?
I am Mister Chair. Good evening.
Uh, Miss Sushi, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mister Conroy, members of the zoning Board of Appeals. For the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent Sandec in Hennessy. Ten fifty five Washington Boulevard in Stamford and I represent the applicant six forty one Connecticut Avenue, Norwalk LLC. Uh, present tonight are Matt Bruton of M L, of B L Companies, Trevor Edkin, representative of Raymore and Flanagan. We also have Curtis McMurray, Shane Cornwin, Mike Barbuto and Wade Haran and all of um, Seven Brew. We were before you last month, so I don't want to go through all of the details. I think everyone. I even think uh, Mister Ferguson was on the, the uh, hearing last month. But just briefly, the project properties at six forty one Connecticut Avenue, right across the street from um, Home Depot. Um, is District five, block seventy two, um, lot twenty eight A. We filed the application in June. You first heard this matter in your, at your July meeting. And uh, neighbors were notified, the sign went up, the sign is still up. But as part of your discussion with us and our presentation to you last month. You provided us with a variety of comments, suggestions and ideas that you liked us to consider. To hopefully bring the project closer into compliance with the regulations and the form based code and some of the ideals. That are being espoused for Connecticut Avenue and for the city as a whole. We believe we've achieved many of those goals. I don't think we've been able to eliminate variances, but I think the project now. Reflects some of your comments and concerns um, and may have, and we've come quite a long way. Um, Matt Bruton, would you mind calling up the original plan and then we can call up what proposed is? As he's doing that, site is three point eight acres. There's a fifty eight thousand square foot two story Raymore and Flanagan building and that's at the bottom of the screen. There are about a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty parking spaces existing and this lot is in the C D three C zone. This was the plan you saw in July and on the left it shows a, a two small buildings that would be the coffee kiosk of about five hundred square feet with a small refrigeration building to its left. Of about two hundred fifty square feet. We had originally proposed a drive through that circu- circulated around the building, coming into the lot, circulating around and then coming back out. There were concerns, uh, various concerns about perhaps there would be a better way to orient not only the building but the drive through. To perhaps make the structure um, configured on the lot in a way that could be more pedestrian friendly and active. configured on the lot in a way that could be more pedestrian friendly and activate interest and, uh, walk, and increase walkability in front of the site. We took all of those concerns to heart and we submitted revised plans. Perhaps we can just look at those now and we'll explain to you what the differences are. Pretty obvious, but in any event, we've now realigned, reconfigured where the structures would be. They are no longer perpendicular to Connecticut Avenue, but parallel to right up against that, um, delineated area of this seventy feet from the center line of Connecticut Avenue, the old common council setback. In front of the building, we've created a more of a pedestrian area that has picnic tables, um, and sidewalk area and even bike rack in front. So the hope there would be to address your concerns that pedestrians walking along Connecticut Avenue would have some reason to come onto the site and come, to come into the building. In addition, the coffee kiosk itself on that northern or Connecticut Avenue side would have a full entrance into the, the building from that, um, patio area that would be created in the, um, that corridor along Connecticut Avenue in that, Tom, cancel the old common council setback. Uh, by doing, um, by reconfiguring the, the project in this regard, the building, the building build out, the frontage build out goes from, you know, very minimal amount and set packs some eighty feet. This is about twenty, twenty percent now of the building, um, the lot frontage. Um, it's not sixty percent, but it's very hard with a very small building to then come up with a sixty percent frontage build out. The design of the building remains generally the same. It is, has a two-story component and then it slopes back to a one-story and in the rear of it. But, um, and then the, the, uh, drive-through, excuse me, would circumnavigate into the parking lot and all the way around the, uh, kiosk and that, uh, as the red line is showing. So there would not be any cars that would come along Connecticut Avenue. The building would be right up against that buffer area between the, um, sidewalk and, excuse me, between the curb line and then the back of that seventy-foot setback area. So that's what we did. We thought that this was reflective of what your comments were. Um, we kept the building at the kind of one, two-story sloping down to one story and the storage refrigeration component would remain the same. The structures haven't changed in size. We haven't made them larger. We've just reoriented them and added, uh, that, as I said before, that entryway right from the sidewalk on into the structure um, along Connecticut Avenue on the north side of the building. But everything else has generally remained the same. We hope that this is something that you'll consider that you, and we hope that you will find this to be a substantial enough change. And the hardships that we discussed with you last month remain the same. It's very difficult for a small structure like this to meet the new form-based codes, particularly the sixty percent frontage build out, uh, the two-story minimum, um, and other component parts. You had also asked us to provide some information on what the other two-story structures that line Connecticut Avenue and elsewhere, what they are all about. Uh, Popeye's at four ninety-seven Connecticut Avenue, and this information is from the assessors' records. Four ninety-seven Connecticut Avenue was built in twenty seventeen. It's twenty-two hundred square feet on the first floor, eighteen hundred fifty square feet on the second floor, but from what I can tell, it's not used space or occupied space. The Chick-fil-A at four sixty-seven Connecticut Avenue, a little further to the east, was built as well in twenty seventeen. The first floor is fifty-one hundred square feet. The second floor is also fifty-one hundred square, square feet. And that is just unfinished unused space up on the second floor. Starbucks across the street at five hundred Connecticut Avenue, that was built in twenty sixteen. It is nineteen hundred square feet on the first floor, eighteen hundred square feet on the second floor, and I believe that's used possibly for storage, but it's, it's not like the, um, McDonald's on Westport Avenue where there's a stairway up and you can go upstairs and eat and sit and, um, possibly do some work. Wendy's at five hundred Connecticut Avenue, that was built in nineteen eighty-two, prior to the two-story minimum requirement. And the Donut Delight on the bowling alley property to the west of this site, that was also a one-story structure built many years ago, prior to the two-story requirement. So he would ask us to give you some idea of what the other two-story independent freestanding buildings are. They're substantially larger than the five hundred square feet that we're proposing for this coffee kiosk. That about sums it up. Um, we're happy to hear what you have to say, answer any questions you may have. The, the entire team is here, but I think we've tried to address the concerns, the questions and incorporate your suggestions. I think did a pretty good job.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sutchie. Just an initial comment on my part, and then I'm gonna let everybody else jump in is, uh, thank you for reconfiguring the site. This looks much, um, better than what was proposed last time. Other questions from other members of the board?
Well.
May I comment?
Sure.
Uh, I, I've made some notes to last meeting and I'm happy that they were addressed, especially with the, with the, with the movement of the parking lot and the accessibility from the public. So I really appreciate the time that they took to put that together in detail, so I was able to see it clearly.
Hmm, I would say that this is a considerable improvement over the previous uh, application. Um, I think the circulation works well. I like the connection between, uh, the coffee kiosk and Connecticut Avenue. I think providing the, the picnic table, the bike rack, I think, uh, will generate pedestrian traffic along with the automobile traffic. Uh, the one comment I have is, uh, the masonry, I assume it's masonry wall of the, uh, refrigeration building. Thank you. I'd really like to see some landscaping, uh, in front of that wall to give some interest and depth rather than just a blank wall. The coffee kiosk itself has windows, it becomes very obvious, but I think that adding some vegetation, some interesting trees like birch, something that has form will soften that elevation a great deal. And I don't mean to be an architectural review board here, but I am an architect, but I, I think this is a vast improvement. I really have no other issues with it.
Um, any other comments on it?
Got a couple of questions. So for people who are walking up to this building, is this, is this a walk-up situation or a walk-in situation? I see there's a, a few doors, but the, I couldn't really tell from the floor plans on the inside whether there's like, whether you intend for guests to actually go inside the structure.
Sure, I'll answer that. Wade Harden with Corporate Seven Brew, seven twenty-one, four circle, seven three zero nine three. The, the intent would be for this to be a walk-up border point, so they'd walk up to, uh, the building and be greeted by a employee and then the order would be taken and then the drink would be hand-delivered to the pedestrian or the customer who then could take the, the drink or their, their, their item to the pedestrian area there.
Right, I, I thought I would see like, uh, like an order window and maybe I just missed that, but it wasn't readily apparent to me on the plans.
Last, last time around was an order window. It was within the interior space between, uh, at least almost interior space between the refrigeration unit and the building itself.
Yeah, it looks like the sliding door.
Correct, so, so we have, we take orders, uh, so in the drive-through as well, we take, we have what are called texters. Those employees will actually go out and greet the customer and take their order from a tablet, which is then sent into the, what I'll call the kitchen, for lack of a better term, where their drink, their orders made and then again delivered by hand to the customer.
So that's the idea with a pedestrian oriented, the oriented side.
That's correct.
Somebody would come up to the sliding door, somebody would greet them and then they'd go sit at the table and then they'd bring them their coffee.
Correct, and we're fairly quick, so once that order's placed, within a minute or two, they'd have their drink. So they could stand there and then take their drink to the, to the pedestrian area if they'd like.
Yeah, but they don't enter the building the way you handle it, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
The impact to the total amount of parking on the site.
Matt, could you, uh, give us the numbers again?
Can you guys? Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, yeah, uh, just for the record, Matt Bruton, a professional engineer, uh, from B L Companies, three fifty-five Research Parkway in Meriden, Connecticut. Um, so the, um, totally, between both uses, the, the coffee and the Raymore and Flanagan require a hundred and five spaces and what is provided is a hundred and twenty-one. It's a reduction from what they're currently, but it's still above the required zoning requirement.
Last time I made a comment about, you know, wishing that you could use the, you know, fuller space of this entire parking lot. Um, and, and you said that, uh, you kind of run into issues with the, the parking minimums. Uh, again, I can sympathize, but, um, given that with this proposal, you are over the, the, the required amount by fifteen spaces. Like how? How do I phrase this? Like how, how big could you go on some use, uh, before you then like can't meet the regs anymore?
Yeah, Ben, that's a great question. It's probably really complicated to answer, so the prior layout, um, with this, with the same, with the same footprint as, as Liz pointed out, was obviously interior to the parking lots. We actually wiped out a lot more parking spaces with the prior layout. This one being pushed forward, um, obviously the building doesn't impact any, any parking spaces, but the drive-through with the orientation does, but it does less than what the prior one does. If you were to add a, say, another building here, right, it's complicated, right, because I'd, we'd have to increase the parking regulations for the new, uh, square footage, but then we'd likely lose spaces as well, so it's a, it's a really tough math game to do. Um, but I'd say, as Liz pointed out, right, I, I've worked on, on, and as you guys have seen hundreds of projects, I've worked on tons of projects. There's not things that are much smaller than what we're proposing here. And kind of the next step up is what you, what you guys have seen with, with other, uh, quick service restaurants, thirteen hundred square feet, five thousand square feet. I don't think that would be possible here. It'd be, it'd have to be something of a, another small user. I don't even know of, of any other tenant that exists to that degree that would be able to, to come onto this site and still um, minimize the amount of variances required, especially with the parking, so, um, I don't know if that answers your question, that's the best I can probably do without finding a certain scenario.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense. I mean, despite the, the changes you're posing here, uh, relative to last month, I, I still feel much the same about the concept as a whole, uh, which is that it's not really in keeping with the intention of how the regulations are written. However, it really seems that the regulations are flawed because th- they don't allow for the kind of, uh, development that, that they say they want to, uh, uh, incentivize. Um, if, if you're constrained by the parking regulations, um, such that you can't build anything, build anything bigger than this, this small building, then, uh, then I think the regulations need a rewrite.
Yeah.
But I think, yeah, my mentality is still much the same as last month.
Yeah, I think, I think Ben, what's tough here is this is redevelopment, right? If we were to start fresh with a brand-new, clean vacant site, obviously it could be, it could be laid out differently, but given that there's a successful Raymore and Flanagan that tends to be to stay on-site and, and be a long-term tenant and employer and tax provider to the city, trying to engage, uh, and get closer to your regulations. Right now you have zero engagement at the street level. This addition of this additional tenant obviously brings some more jobs, some more tax base and also kind of brings it closer to compliance, even though it, it, it's not hitting the mark on all, on all levels, so. We do see it as an improvement, but I understand your, your point of view in terms of, you know, bigger picture, if this was pie in the sky, what, what could we do here if it was a, a blank slate?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I know you have, uh, no control over it, but I, our regs really ought to, uh, allow for this kind of a scenario where you're not going to fully redevelop the site from scratch. You want to work with what's there, uh, and kind of fill in the blanks. In this case, we got a nice big blank parking lot.
And that's, that's one of the things that we were, we, perhaps we didn't do it artfully last month, but the regs don't, as, as Matt just indicated, as we did indicate last month, they, they don't, didn't contemplate small infill structures, freestanding structures like this, particularly on a lot where the, all of the parking is in front, which is what the city doesn't want anymore. And to soften the lot, to engage people, I think this, this goes a long way toward that end. But without, um, seeking relief from this board, we, we won't, we wouldn't be able to move forward. That's exactly the reason that all of you get to get together on Thursday nights to, uh, to, to provide relief when relief is deemed necessary and appropriate. I think in this case, it is a unique circumstance.
I, I want to chime in that I, I appreciate the, the move. I think, you know, you guys definitely heard all our comments and that I think the circulation's actually a lot better for vehicles and for pedestrians. I think I understand, you know, the practical reasons that the setback is still, um, beyond the city's limits. And I think there's actually an opportunity there, which you're starting to show and take advantage of, which is to actually make usable, desirable, occupiable outdoor space to accompany the business. With your kind of paved, it, like increasing the sidewalk zone and making the paved area there, which I think is, I think is good. I'd like to see maybe a little bit more thought into that part. Um, I know it's kind of different than the typical Seven Brew development, but you know, I mean, maybe more than one picnic table for starters. Um, and just piggybacking on Lee's like landscaping idea, like how, how does that, you know, how does that outdoor amenity space to this business start to feel more in line with the Norwalk zoning regulations and, and their desired intent for these kinds of sites?
Well, I think I can speak on behalf of the client without having the client go through each, each component. As far as landscaping is concerned, as suggested by Commissioner Levy, we're happy to install more landscaping to soften the look or, or to provide a better pedestrian or customer experience. Um, we can certainly work with staff if you deem it appropriate to grant the relief that we seek. That we'll work with staff to come up with a planting plan. Um, and I think it's, it's more than appropriate to have more than one picnic table there or so, so whatever that space can accommodate, um, we can certainly, we'd certainly agree to both of those. But this, this is, this is the best we can do with what we have and with the constraints placed upon us by new regulations that really don't address circumstances such as this. Perhaps upcoming regulation changes and amendments may be able to take a look at this so that some of the lots we have on Connecticut Avenue could have small freestanding structures like this and we wouldn't have to come to the ZBA for relief.
I have another question.
Wait, hold on. Any other board member that hasn't spoken yet, uh, have any questions? Uh, go ahead.
Does this proposal change the existing sidewalk at all?
Uh, Ben, I'm gonna zoom in here just so you can see it, yeah, so I'll just try to outline it and then I can show you the street view so you can get a picture of it, but um, the existing property line is here in red. And the, uh, existing sidewalk, you can see it labeled here, uh, basically um, follows these lines right here, so it's a little, again, adding to the uniqueness of the parcel, the, the public sidewalk, the public right-of-way uh, is actually on the Raymore and Flanagan property. So the goal is not to, uh, realign or move that, uh, but to expand off it as we've shown here with the uh, amenity space and obviously with the bike rack, but it is actually, does actually fall on private property. And I think it's been modified and rebuilt recently with the, uh, development next door. The goal is to keep it, keep it there in its condition. Um, and if I show you street view here, um, I don't know, this is maybe a, a year or two old from twenty July, twenty, a year old, but this is kind of what it looks like. But our property line does come into the green space closer to the curb.
So the hatched area is your build-out from the door.
Correct, I can highlight that for you, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, this, this whole, this whole area here would be the amenity space in front of the building with the picnic tables. Also provided that, uh, concrete area for a bike rack along that same space as well. Now, obviously, these, these are, um, hardscape areas that kind of go around the building. So I think it's definitely integrating into the existing frontage, uh, while maintaining a lot of that green buffer which we spoke about last time, uh, without disrupting obviously the, the flow of what's there now.
I think it's a big, big improvement.
I've, I've got a, a couple more follow-up questions here. So the, the sidewalk goes on, on the property, but it's maintained by so the, the sidewalk goes on, on the property, but it's maintained by the city. Is that correct? Because it's, it's public sidewalk or?
I would suspect, I suspect, Mr. Chairman, and you're correct that since it's on private property, it's likely required to be maintained by Ray.
Okay. Um, I do, so I do appreciate the addition of a bike rack. Uh, I'm a big cyclist, so appreciate, appreciate, uh, more bike racks. And that got me thinking that if, I mean, you know, Route one is not the, uh, most bike friendly part of Norwalk. But something that would make me a little bit more amenable to this whole proposal is if, uh, perhaps the sidewalk could be widened a bit. It's, do you know how wide it is? It looks like maybe it's five feet, six feet, something like that?
Uh, if you give me a moment, I can measure it out for you. Just give you the exact number.
I want to say it's 18. Could be wrong though.
Have it surprise me.
It's rather wide.
Ever take seven? Seven feet wide?
Yeah, okay. Cause if you want to make it a little bit a modicum, it will, you know, within your, your sphere of influence here, easier to, uh, bike to, to this property. Um, I think widening the sidewalk to 10 feet along the full with the property would go a long way. At that point, it's, it's mimicking almost like a multi-use path kind of thing. Uh, and I see this in a lot of other places around Norwalk where a site is redeveloped or altered and they, they put in sidewalks where there weren't previously any. Um, that can definitely lead to some like, you know, piecemeal, uh, sections of, of sidewalk. Um, and I'm glad that there is one already here. Um, but in the interest of further improving, whatever we are able to improve, um, I think going from, from seven to 10 would make a huge difference.
I would make the recommendations that we, that the applicant consult the Walk and Bike Commission on sidewalk with. I would really hate to see the sidewalk become a raceway, which is what wider sidewalks tend to become. I think seven feet is quite adequate for a bicyclist and a pedestrian to pass one another. I don't think we need 10 feet.
10 feet is a, a standard multi-use path width. I've had to my fair share of bike walk commission meetings.
I, I would say we talked to Walk and Bike to get their opinion on it. And I'll yield to them as to the width that they feel is adequate.
They're a good resource.
Well, I, a concern I do have is if we're now starting to talk about widening the test, the sidewalk on our property, that now starts to be an issue that we may, uh, and Matt, if I'm going too far afield, correct me, that we may start having an issue about total coverage. Because now we have to calculate in additional coverage. And if we're now moving that along, I, I don't know how, how far off we are, if we're pretty close to whatever the maximum is.
Yeah, we're, we're 75% of 80%. There is some, obviously some things that are close by, like guy wires for existing uh, utility poles along this corridor as well. So it, it's something that could be looked at, but it might be challenging to achieve. Um,
And then I'm sure there's also snow, snowshelf fish, snow shelf issues that we may have to be concerned about and existing, um, utility poles. And I, I, I don't know what else is underneath sidewalk that would, I don't know if ever source would be interested in having us create sidewalk over their easements, which I'm sure exists along the corridor. Uh, seven feet is, is, is pretty good on this, this section of town. And then the other concern is what happens on either side? I don't think either, um, either side of this property. Uh, I don't think Wegmans has a 10-foot wide sidewalk. I don't know. But, um, it would disrupt what's there right now. Um, and I'm concerned about coverage.
Well, I would rather see more green than hard surface. I mean, we're always fighting to get more green and taking green away is not good.
Well, you are, uh, relatively blessed with, uh, quite a bit of room on either side of, uh, of this sidewalk. I think we'd make a big improvement. But, uh, I don't think I have anything more to say on that topic right now.
Anyone else? So let's look for public comment. Uh, Tammy? Port, raise their hand.
Okay. So, um, just for the record, we didn't receive any written comments. Um, attendees, if you would like to speak, uh, for this item, please raise your hand. You can use, if you've called in, we do have one caller. You can use star nine to raise your hand. No raised hands.
No raised hands. Anybody in opposition that wants to raise their hand?
Still no raised hands.
Okay. Um, there isn't any need for rebuttal that I can see this, so.
No, Mr. Chairman, there isn't. I just want to reiterate that yes, we are certainly happy to install landscaping per Commissioner Levy's comment. And additional seating area, picnic table or, or two or whatever is appropriate that it isn't crowded, but addresses Commissioner Sancheck's comment. We'd be happy to do that.
All right. That's good. And, and not to be overly silly about it, did you get a permit for that building behind you?
I was involved with Raybar Flanagan many years ago.
All right. Well, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. You, you mean the building behind me here?
The colonnades.
Well, no, but it's still standing through the millennia.
Yes. Obviously it was a very strong structure. Um, so with that, having gotten to the point where we don't have any further questions, we don't have any further public input. And you do not need to, uh, combat any com- uh, complaints. Uh, I think I'm ready to move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just to clarify, we're closing the hearing on that one, not seeking further. Okay.
Yes. Daniel, you're up for the next one.
Last item on the agenda today is item 25 dash 0821 dash 01, John A. and Mary B. Gerster, variances of table 4.3.1 dash C for front setback, 30 feet required, 11.5 feet existing and proposed to roof overhang slash 13.5 building and impervious surface coverage, 50% allowed, 55.79% existing and 56.52% proposed. For a second story addition to an existing single-family residence in CD dash 1S zone and coastal area management overlay. Property is located at 53 Row 8th Avenue, District 6, Block 1D, Lot 3. Request, the applicant seeks to renovate existing home and build a partial second story addition over the existing first story footprint. Setback variances are requested for the proposed roof overhang and impervious coverage. The single-family home was originally built in 1918. The home was razed and renovated in 2013. The home includes a previously approved non-conforming garage bay that does not require, that does not provide the required parking dimension. Analysis and findings. While vertical expansion over non-conforming footprint is allowed as of right, this proposal includes a roof overhang that does not occur on the existing first story. Instead, there is a roof deck over the first story garage. The proposed addition would include a roof overhang to match the existing second story roof line. Conversion of the undersized garage to living space is as of right, since the garage did not provide the compliant parking in the location or dimension. In this case, the undersized lot, along with the can, non-conforming building footprint due to the home predating zoning regulations could be deemed a hardship. Coastal site plan review. This activity does not require a separate review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, any application for variance within the CAM boundary is required by statute to be reviewed for potential impacts to coastal resources by the board. The proposed second story addition is not anticipated to have any adverse impact on coastal resources. The ZBA findings or motion must contain a statement that the proposal is or is not consistent with CCMA goals and policies and will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources.
Daniel, you're the lead on this.
All right.
Don't forget, don't forget at the end, if, when we go all wrap up, you've got to do the coastal.
The CCMA goals. Yeah. All right. So sitting on this, we have myself, Lee, Steve, Kathy and Ben. Um, is there a representative or the applicant that would like to speak?
Uh, there is. My name's Dan Conlin. I'm the architect for the project. Uh, I spoke earlier with Tammy. She's going to help me in terms of just putting some visual material up for you, uh, on the screen. I guess I'd just like to start, I have an aerial photograph just to give you a location of the property. I'm not sure if any of the commissioners have had a chance to walk by the site. Uh, the little red dots, the existing residence on, uh, Row 8th Avenue. We front directly on the Five Mile River. Um, it's an area that's pretty densely developed, all single-family homes. We're in the CD, uh, 1S zone. The existing structure, um, so this just gives you an idea of the general context and the scale of, uh, neighboring buildings and the, uh, setbacks of the, uh, building specifically to the south. Um, is it even a little closer to the street than, than, than we are, we propose to be? If I could bring up our, uh, survey map, I can just run through quickly the, um, the request. Um, and I think it, it pretty clearly shows what we're looking to do here.
Sorry, one second.
Sure. Uh, so there we are. You can see the, uh, the existing, uh, footprint of the building. Our proposal is to go in that shaded area, the proposed addition. The subject of our variance request is the shaded area of the overhangs. And we're requesting that you allow us to have these overhangs to match the existing architecture. Um, it's a pretty straightforward request. Um, in no case will we be any closer to the front property line or the side property line with these overhangs than we already are. We're going to match them exactly as they exist today. Um, as, as was mentioned in the staff report, the addition itself is allowed as of right by the regulations. And it's just the, uh, the overhangs that we need to, uh, that we need to deal with here. And I think, um, so just to, uh, I think the staff report stated everything pretty clearly. Um, our existing, uh, required front setback is 30 feet. We're currently 13 and a half feet to the building and 11 and a half feet to the existing overhang. We propose to be 13 feet to the building and 11 and a half to the overhang with our addition. Um, the, uh, impervious surface area, which was not, um, actually regulated until recent, uh, changes in the regulations. Uh, we were existing non-conforming. We had an allowable area of 2,056 square feet. Our existing was, uh, 2,294. And we're proposing to add 30 square feet to that. So that total, uh, request is less than a sheet of plywood in, um, in total area. And then Tammy, if you'd be good enough to bring up my cover sheet, I could, uh, just give you the, the logic for why we're making this request and then talk a little bit about the hardship that might justify it. I just have a, a existing, um, in, in the, the cover sheet was the one I sent earlier today with the photograph and the, um,
Yeah, the board received it, but if you want to share with the public, Tammy, can you bring it up?
There it is. Yep, I'm working on it.
There it is. We got it. So, so basically this kind of tells the story. Uh, the photograph to the right is existing conditions as the building exists today. That little flat roof area above the existing garage door there, uh, is an equipment deck. Uh, we're proposing to just basically extend the roof lines of the existing building and match the overhang. So we make kind of a coherent elevation to the street with our, uh, with our new building. And then that small fenced area that you see above the roof line is where we're going to relocate our AC units. And that'll allow us to keep them above the flood elevation and respect all the required setbacks. So the, the hardship, um, that would justify this variance is that we have a legally non-conforming lot. The lot is 4,012 square feet and 6250 are required. So it's substantially undersized. Um, and the building was constructed in 1918, so it predates the adoption of the Norwalk, uh, zoning regulations. Um, our situation is a little unique in that we have a portion of the building that has no overhang at all. And then the taller portions have an overhang. So, um, we're just asking the board to find that, that the hardship of the non-conforming, uh, lot and, uh, and the fact that the house predates the zoning regulations is sufficient to justify this small, uh, relief sought in order to make an architecturally pleasing solution. And, uh, with that, I'll take your questions.
Let me ask Tammy a quick question, even though I'm not on this item. Tammy, do we need to deal with the lot or just with the structure?
I don't know if I understand the question.
Well, we were talking about an unconforming lot needed a variance. I don't see the need for.
No, no, no. It doesn't need a variance because it's a non-conforming lot. We're saying that contributes towards the hardship.
All right. Okay.
But the variances are for the, I guess the setback and the impervious surface coverage?
Correct. Because the roof overhang, you only allow a two-foot encroachment if you're on a conforming footprint. So this is further encroachment. I mean, relatively small, but yeah.
So, so the only reason we're before the board at all is to allow us to align those overhangs.
And the impervious number is going down because the roof is the like additional.
No, the impervious number is actually going up slightly. It's going up by 30 square feet.
Right. That's what I mean, but it's because of the overhang.
Just because of the overhang. And, and again, it's just on the side of the building because there's, uh, impervious paving on the front of the building. So we're not increasing the impervious area on the front side, just on that little piece on the side. Um, so from a practical point of view, it's, it's, it's really no increase at all unless the rain falls absolutely vertically.
Okay. I have two more questions. Where does your client currently park?
In the street.
Okay. Um, and then as part of this addition, did you consider the, what I'll call the driveway? Um, reduce it, making that, uh, pervious paving or some kind of number to, to take that number from going up to going down?
Uh, we, we did not. Um, we, we do want to keep an, an easily walkable surface because the main motivator for this project is we'd like to install a residential elevator so the owners can age in place. And, uh, we'd like to have a smooth walking surface to get from the street to the building so that, so that that can happen. Um, uh, however, uh, no, we did not consider doing that. And the, uh, the coverage increase in, in our view was de minimis.
Yeah. But it, it looks like you could possibly offset that.
It, it is a possibility. I mean, as a, uh, to, for us to find 30 square feet, I, I, I believe we could do that if you wanted to make that a condition of approval.
Okay. That's it for me. Anybody else have comments, questions?
I, I really don't have any issue. I think that the variance request for the roof eve is, I think justified by the architecture of the house. Uh, so I don't really consider it, uh, uh, problematic.
I agree with Lee. Um, in addition, I think it's fantastic that you're keeping the AC units on the roof, given that you're in a flood zone. Um, I think it's just a win-win all around.
Same here. I agree with Kathy. Uh, we've been trying to push ACs on the roof. So I appreciate, uh, conforming with that.
You need commentary, Daniel.
Okay. Yep. Uh, all right. So all right, if there are any members of the public that want to speak um, in favor of the project, will, we can hear those now. If you raise your hand. Tammy, do we see anybody?
There are folks, but no raised hands.
Okay. Um, if anyone wants to speak in opposition, you can raise your hand now. Anyone?
No raised hands.
Okay. I think, uh, with that, we can close this, uh, this item.
Well said. Um, the presenter probably wouldn't need to rebut anything because there was nothing to rebut. So if you're satisfied, the hearing is closed.
That's, that's my kind of hearing.
Alrighty. Moving on.
It is.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. It's time to move into our decision phase. Want to take the last one first? And Daniel, you're the lead in the discussion.
Sure. Um, you know, I think you could pretty much offset that impervious coverage number pretty quickly. So I'm inclined to make that a condition of approval, but, uh, curious to hear what everybody else wants to say.
I would agree, Danielle. Thirty-two square feet. Easy to find.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, if that's the only thing they have to do to satisfy us, they've done very well.
Yeah, I don't feel too strongly about that one way or the other. Uh, I think in, in general, the their ask is pretty small, so I don't have a problem with it.
Same here.
Then what you need to do is do the vote on this and also do the coastal.
Yep. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve it with the condition that the impervious, uh, uh, coverage number be offset, um, by adding some more and a greenery or permeable paving of some kind.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Is that everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. That's unanimous. Um, and then we also have to make a motion about the, uh, coastal
Management.
Management overlay.
Well, I think by reducing the uh, impervious surface by thirty-two feet, we are making an effort to, to have a lesser impact on, uh, the coast of Connecticut.
There you go. We are consistent with CCMA goals.
Yes.
And will not adversely impact coastal resources. All right.
That's the motion?
That's.
Yeah, just have to vote. That's all.
Oh, I'll second that motion.
All right, good. All in favor, Danielle?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific. And we'll move on to the next item. Um, which was the middle item. And it is six forty-one Connecticut Avenue. Raymar Flanagan parking lot addition. I'll just make a simple comment that without making it over complicated, it seems that when we made some suggestions, that the site plan came back and re- reflects that those selections have been brought into the plan. And as the way it is laid out in the front of the Raymar Flanagan parking lot, they seem to be harmonized with that. And I don't, I don't have a problem with the way it's laid out at all. I think it's good. And I thought there was some thoughtfulness with dealing with pedestrians and bikers. Um, and with that, uh, other comments?
Yeah, I, I think that they're doing the best that they can with the situation they have. But to me, it's still falls short of even a half measure of, of what that site should be or could be. Um, I was, I was doing some looking around at like what's actually around this property. And there's, uh, there's not much. There's, it was really not much, like, like even the way that they've designed it. Um, and that they presented this month, I I, I still imagine that it's going to be like ninety-five percent drive-through traffic to like five percent pedestrian traffic. If that. And it, it's still, it still doesn't meet what the zoning regs are trying to accomplish along Route One.
I agree with you, Ben. What I have seen recently, like even the right next door where Wegmans built the additional structure and Costco further down the street. What they're trying to do is like they will back up their buildings and make them face the inner parking lot to get, get away with both meeting the regulation of having to come out to the street. But they're actually offering no street oriented entries, glazing, retail. Like I appreciate that the Seven Brew is doing better than that. By a lot. And I think that's, you know, in part because of the conversation that we, that we had. Because they could have done the same thing and just put the back of their building up to the front. Which, you know, isn't, isn't getting, you know, it might be technically compliant, but it's not getting at what the zoning regulations are trying to achieve either. So I think that you're right, that there's some room for the regulations to rethink how Route One is being addressed. Um, such that some of those things like don't keep happening.
Yeah. And it all comes down to the, to the parking minimums. Uh, it's really, uh, too bad that the, the regulations seem to be pretty, pretty flawed that way. And I, I don't know. I would wish that, uh, people trying to develop along this corridor, uh, and the public would, uh, kind of make that known to our public officials, to the planning and zoning commission and so forth.
Well, I think.
There's a lot of wasted potential here.
Connecticut Avenue has been a disaster for the last thirty years. And I think all the zoning efforts that have been made have only made it worse. I think traffic flows very poorly. There's very little pedestrian respect along Connecticut Avenue. Uh, all the talk about the discontinuous sidewalks, uh, the bus stops. But I think this is an effort to relate a structure to the sidewalk, to the pedestrian, to the bikers, uh, besides the, the drive-up. And you know, I asked the question at the last meeting about what happens if this is a failure and they have said it'll be removed. Uh, I think this is a grand experiment uh, on Connecticut Avenue. And if it's successful, maybe more property owners might improve their properties by uh, providing more amenities along the sidewalk for pedestrians and bikers. But that's, that's only a hope because the zoning regulations don't really put that forward as an effort.
Yeah. I think at the core though, this proposal is really just a doubling down on hard dependent uses that have made Connecticut Avenue such a disaster in the first place. To, to really move it forward, to really improve things. You've got to come up with uses that do not like solely center around a car. And again, I will, I will give the applicant credit for doing as much as they can do within a very, you know, narrow bounds here. But I, I still think it's the, not the right, not the right direction.
I think the only way you're going to address the right direction would be when all the big box stores fail. And it's redeveloped, much as we're seeing office being, buildings being redeveloped into other uses. But until that happens, I think this is, you know, really a, a small improvement that I don't see has a great negative effect and only a small positive effect.
Well, what I see is I see an improvement. I frequent that, that road a lot. So when it talks about direction, I think improvement, uh, that word makes sense to me. And, um, I'm looking forward to seeing more improvements along that corridor.
Do you want some history, Ben? I moved here in eighty-five.
Yeah.
Route, route, as you went down it, on the right, as you're moving towards center Norwalk, was this really long truck terminal. Completely dilapidated with rusted out truck hulks all over the damn lot. That's gone. That was a big improvement.
You know, I'm thinking about old McDonald's with the peanuts on the floor.
Anyway, that, that thing was a horrible eyesore. And it was very.
I'm still thinking about old McDonald's.
The, uh, across the street where there's a post diner, there was behind that um, a overgrown lot that used to be, uh, driving movie. Hadn't been used in years. So this was the condition in nineteen eighty-five. Now, there's been a lot of changes and things built and things changed since then. And I think that's going to continue into the future. And, um, I, I can't believe that, uh, Route One is going to stay exactly as it is. There's a lot of room for improvement all the way up and down it.
Now, it, to add to what you've said, personally, I think the worst thing that's been built on Route One is the parking structure in front of Home Depot. I think it presents such a barrier to the building. Personally, I don't use Home Depot anymore, but when I did, I always drove up to the top because it was a good parking area. And you didn't have to battle the, the crazies pulling in and out of, uh, blind parking spaces.
Was that Rickles, Lee? Was that Rickles?
No, Rickles is where.
Walmart.
Not Walmart.
Same place.
No.
Walmart.
Was located where there, the electronics store is now.
Okay.
Anyway, there's been a lot of change. Needs to be a lot more change. Um, I don't, I would never ride my bike down one. I just wouldn't do it. I've seen too many.
Well, there are people in it that will. Those who work on that corridor will be parking their bikes, I'm sure.
Yeah, I haven't seen bikers on it. If, if they are, they're brave people.
That was peeled from me. I'm out there.
Oh, yeah?
It's not for the fan of art.
I'll watch for you.
Okay, um, do we have any additional comments? Any requirements you think got overlooked? And since the answer is none, um, do I have a motion on this?
I make a motion, uh, to approve, uh, with the added comments that was made, uh, beforehand.
About landscaping?
Yes, sir. With that Lee mentioned, uh, in front of the building, I like the glaze in the windows there. It's more open, as Danielle mentioned, which I appreciate the way it looks. I just want to have it used properly without causing a bottleneck on the sidewalk. So I'm looking forward to seeing how it comes out.
Just to make it easier for me.
Picnic table.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was gonna say to make it easy for me, can we?
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Wait a minute, can we get the specific conditions? So we want landscaping and more.
We can't make that, we make, could we make that a condition for the landscaping and?
We can make it a condition, uh, and the request was to do it in front of the refrigeration.
Lee mentioned birch. Can we recommend a particular species as well or?
No, I wouldn't do that.
Okay. All right. So I, I.
You can throw it, here's what you can do. You can throw it to the staff to monitor what they do. Then they'll have to come and explain to the staff what the landscaping plan is.
Okay, well, I make the.
She's done that over and over again.
Okay, so I make the motion to approve with the recommendation of landscaping, staffing, taking the lead and making the firm recommendations on the type of vegetation alongside the building.
Okay, great.
I'll second it.
And leave seconds. Uh, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 I'm a no.
Four. Okay. And Ben, you're a no or an abstention?
I'm a no.
You're a no. So Ben's a no, four passes.
Just to be, just to be clear on the note, Ben, the reason for the no is the sidewalk concept, the widening of the sidewalk, Ben. I want to know why the no. I'm just asking, Ben, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking, like, the reason for the no, I just want to know the reason for the no.
No, I'm hap- happy to, uh, explain myself. Um, the reason for the no is because it is another primarily car dependent use being added to Connecticut Avenue, which I think is not we want to add more of. Drive-throughs in general, I think are corrosive to, you know, urban corridors like Route One. So because it is a drive-through and primarily a drive-through and it will see almost all of its business as a drive-through, uh, I oppose it.
Understood. Thanks, Ben, for clarifying that.
Now, you knew though, Steve, that if somebody doesn't want to tell you, they don't have to tell you, right?
I know that, but Ben.
I'm happy to.
Ben didn't mind, but I don't want you to insist. Um, so we're all set, Ms. Sachi.
Thank you, everyone, for your time, your effort, your consideration. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. We got to deal with, um, thirty-four. What do you want to do? Just go with what we had, which was to move them on to next month? Any comments to the end or expectations?
We, we already voted on the continuance, right?
Lee, don't be a smartass.
I'm sorry.
But Ben, I think you're right. I think you guys did vote to continue.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I, I have a real problem with thirty-four, big time. But I haven't heard anything moving in the right direction until tonight. For the very first time, someone seems to recognize the issues and want to deal with them. Maybe the owner doesn't want to deal with them. And I'll tell you, I won't be voting for it if they're not dealt with.
I, I think the fact that the owner has not passed on to the engineer the real scope of the problem, whether he was retained a week ago or a month ago, uh, signifies to me the difficulty in working with the owner.
I, I don't understand what the owner's doing, frankly. Uh, Tammy, they're looking at almost what, twenty thousand dollars in fines?
So they've already paid, they've already paid a substantial fine.
They've already paid that?
Yeah, seven. Yeah. They've got a, a potential pending fine ahead of them as well. I don't know what's going to happen. They continue to, they, you know, they weren't prepared to present. They're, they're dragging their neighbors out here every time. And then they can't make the case and, you know, the neighbors aren't happy.
Yeah, they've got.
Is there any relief to them?
And they got one more chance.
Is there any relief to them that they get on the ball and, and meet the zoning requirements?
I don't, right, just from just where I'm at right now, without seeing another plan, I, I don't think they, I think they'll need a variance.
All right.
Or they revert, then no need for variance, right?
Yeah. Um, we did have some minutes to approve. And let me go to my agenda.
We have, uh, June and July.
So June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five minutes. Um, I'll move them. Anybody second?
Second.
Second from Lee. Um, all in favor, say aye. If you weren't here, just let me know. Done.
I abstain, I wasn't here.
Thank you. July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye or abstain.
Aye.
Aye. I abstain, I wasn't present.
Kathy abstains. But we're set. They all moved. We're done. Any other further questions for tonight or a commentary?
Discussion, I have discussion, a comment, uh, with Ben. Uh, Ben, I don't want to call you out there, but I just want to know your thoughts. I don't know how else to talk about a topic unless we're in there. So if staff can give me some direction, Ben, I will make it more easier on the airs. I just didn't know how to approach it. So don't think.
No, 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 you're, you're all.
Okay, I just want to make sure, you know, I just don't know how, how else to address it during that timeframe. If staff could give me some more direction, I would have been able to, uh, ask your thoughts during that time. That's the only time we had to talk. So give me some direction, that's all.
Not often on this board that we get a opportunity to decide over whether an entire structure will exist or not. Not often on this board that we get a opportunity to preside over whether an entire structure will exist or not. You know, and and so I I found this application interesting for that reason.
I would have been more strict on the corner where the donut delight is for pedestrian traffic and bikes, but in. In the road, I was I would have been more forgiven, that's my thought, I would have been more forgiven, but not on the corner, so I'm more concerned about the pedestrians on the corner coming in. That's just my two cents, my half a two cents.
Well, I'll throw in my two cents.
Nice, thanks.
That, you know, if planning and zoning. Thirty years ago had really constructively looked at the possibilities of Route One. Uh, and and the the evils of big box stores, which I consider them evil. Uh, I think they would have looked at Route One very differently, and they could have certainly made it. A much more pedestrian and biker-friendly roadway. Uh, I I think it's terribly laid out. Uh, I think architecturally, it's horrible, and I'm gonna leave it at that for tonight.
Yeah, it was the zoning board that uh. Did it, and they did it because the plan of development that was passed at that time said big box stores go in that area. And Norwalk at that time was very much into strip malls, so now you get a very lumpy, large-sized strip mall. Called Route One, and uh, kinda ugly and non-performing. But it'll get.
Years of bad decisions.
But I I like the idea of how do we think about smaller developments in in positive ways, and how do we accommodate? So that you don't have to do a whole site, like to make an improvement, like how do you do incremental infilled? Improvements, like I think those are interesting questions.
Well, there's several large front parking lots all along one, uh, I don't know how you do anything at Home Depot cuz they built a jail. Around the parking lot, uh, but you go down the lows, there's an issue with the height of the parking lot versus the height of one. Uh, it's way the hell up the hill, really, it's like, what, ten, twelve-foot rise, so I don't know what you do there. And then you have the uh PC Richards and some of the um. Sporting goods stores that do seem that that whole area could be reconfigured, that would be really nice.
If you get rid of the parking requirements, that would make a huge difference, cuz cuz then you could do a whole. A whole mixed-use development, right, the parking lot, leave the existing structure in the back, and now you've got like an actual place you've created.
Think about Kohl's, um, they ended up putting um. The the coffee place right in the front, Starbucks, right? And then they redid the tire place frontage, um, I don't know if that's sufficient, but it helped a hell of a lot. Cuz that was kind of an ugly, big parking lot, and I don't know how to go at it other than to start to take little chumps out of it.
Well, I think as big box stores begin to struggle. I mean, we've had uh one uh. You know, uh, God, what's the terrible story, Walmart go out of business, Target, which is just. Opening is in deep financial struggles uh with their corporate structure. And the growth of Amazon, I I think that. You're gonna find people going back to smaller retailers, and I think the nature of Route One. Ten years from now is gonna be very different.
Think we have a bite at the apple with the Main Avenue project, where the BJ's was gonna be, I think that's the bite we have, Ben. To show some um understanding of what we can present for that roadway, if that makes sense.
Well, that that project, you know, I was. Through uh the Norwalk Association of Silver Mine Homeowners, we fought BJ's terribly. I mean, they came before I was on the ZBA, they came to the ZBA to ask for. Before even the project got approved, which it never did, they were asking for the letters BJ. To be, I believe, eight feet high, so that they thought it could be read from the Merritt Parkway. I mean, the.
That's wild.
If it had been approved, anybody who built there could have had eight-foot-high letters on their sign. And we fought it, we fought it architecturally, we fought it through traffic, and it died. Besides the fact that it sits on a brown field.
Yeah.
And you can't build housing on it.
Well, not to go on a tangent, but Target tried a similar approach, and we, on the planning side, chopped that down a little bit, so. We're improving, oh, we're improving, you know, not what we all feel great for, but.
Increments.
Small increments, you know.
You know, we we chip away.
I think Ben's right, is you have to be directional, but you can't. Get there because you're gonna force it, you have to lead your way to it. Um, so you have to be on boards and commissions and go to public meetings and say what you wanna see done.
Exactly.
Anyway, so much for that, I loved it, it was a good night, um, I thank you all for coming, and.
Can I ask one question? Has everybody had a chance to meet with IT to activate their city email accounts?
I'm gonna call him, I'm gonna call him, cuz I had, and I think still have, uh, an email, I just gotta point it in the right direction.
You know, Tammy, if you could set appointments, we all go there together, I have my email, I got it on my cellphone once, but maybe we could do a group meeting there?
It's out of my control, Steve, I wish it was, it's IT, you gotta reach out to.
Okay.
I called them today, I called them today, Steve, and they were like, fine, tomorrow, so I'm going tomorrow at ten.
You know what?
Twenty minutes.
Kathy, I did once, and this Microsoft three sixty, your phone has to be compatible. If it's Samsung or iPhone, I did it, but I'm on on two, I'm on another commission in Norwalk, so I tried to get my emails. On my cellphone, but if you have a way, please share with the crew so that.
Well, I'll let you know how it goes tomorrow.
Save the taxpayers' dollars, and one more question I have for Tammy, the fees that the resident was paying, does that go to the grand list?
The the ZBA application fees?
Yes.
It goes to general fund.
General funds, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, things have to go to the general fund by law.
Steve, I'd like to make a point, where you said have a group meeting. No more than, I believe, three of us can meet at any one time.
I know.
Otherwise, it constitutes a meeting.
Three.
I'm talking about the IT, I'm talking about the emails.
Meeting, three.
I'm talking about the email, the email, Lee.
Same thing, yeah.
Same thing, it doesn't matter.
Wow, oh wow, okay.
I mean, if we accidentally met in a restaurant.
That's okay.
Conversation between four of us.
That's okay.
It's an illegal public hearing.
Yeah.
No.
Bria, you have to leave.
If you accidentally run into each other. If you plan to be together, then we should have published that we're having a meeting and three of us makes a quorum, even though we can't do anything.
So, so Kathy, if Kathy sends the email to the group, we have to count, we have to count it as minutes?
No.
Okay, just making sure.
You have to publish.
Let's not scare Kathy, okay, not, let's not scare Kathy.
Considering I'm an accountant by trade and not an IT person, I, you know, it could be problematic if I'm giving IT advice.
Yes.
No worries.
Thanks, everyone.
Alright, have a good evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Say goodnight.
Motion to adjourn, yes.
Aye.
Second.
Second, aye.
Yeah.
All in favor.
Bye.
Who in town?
Aye.